All right, well, welcome everybody to the October 21st meeting of the City of Boulder Planning Board. We do have a quorum, although we're expecting one more board member, but we do have four of us, so we'll go ahead and get started and hopefully Georgie will be joining us. Let's see, so the first thing we'll do is I'll hand it over to Jean Gatzit to inform us about the rules of participation in the virtual meeting.
Great, thank you David. Okay, the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports the physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council or advisory board members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more about this vision and the full rules of decorum, you can check out the council's website. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision, and these will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, dehumanizing language, racial epithets, or other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants are asked to use their full name of the name that they're commonly known by. Currently, only audio testimony will be permitted for the in the virtual meeting. For the open comment, if folks are interested in speaking, you can use the raise hand function at the bottom of the screen. And when it's your turn, I'll adjust the settings so you'll see an option to unmute. Please, anyone here, please refrain from using the chat function for any comments or questions related to the matters at hand. Actually, the chat dysfunction is disabled. We will only use the Q and A function, but the Q and A should really be only for technical issues regarding the virtual meeting. The board members and staff are not to be looking at the Q and A, so any questions or comments really regarding the content of the meeting, they won't be seeing and is not part of the record, so we ask you to please not do that. I think with that, we do, we only have the open comment tonight and no public hearings. Anything else, David? Did I miss anything?
That sounds like it, so thank you, Jean. Great, so I'm great, and I I'll go ahead and before we jump into the agenda, just remind the public that ballots are out, so don't forget to vote. So you have a few weeks to get your ballots in. All right, so with that, Peter, Vitaly, and Pita Montoya are going to be absent tonight. We are expecting Georgie, but I don't see him yet, but I guess we can kind of start through and hopefully they'll join us at some point. So the first, the second item on the agenda tonight then after our call to order is the minutes and we have the October 7, 2021 minutes scheduled for review. Did anyone have any comments or questions about those minutes? I want to make a motion. Yes, John. Um, did you want to, yeah.
Yeah, I I would move to approve them.
Great, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
At least a second, so okay, so go ahead and just signal your vote, all in favor of approving the October 7th minutes. Great, I see the unanimous vote on that.
Just and David George just sent me a text that he'll be joining us in a couple of minutes. He's stuck on a call.
Great, okay, perfect, so that should be really good timing as we kind of slow roll into public participation and 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 the first agenda item. So and I was just gonna say, Cindy, you're all cut up on minutes, which is great, so thank you for that. It's always great to read how much you get into those minutes every every couple of weeks. So with that, so now is the time that we'll open it up to the public for public participation. As Jean said, we have no public hearing items tonight, so everyone is welcome to speak on anything that's on our agenda, the call up or the or the matters item, or anything else that's on your mind, so you'll have three minutes to speak. I'll call on people and Jean will be responsible for unmuting people, so with that, I see one hand up so far. People, please put your hands up if you are wanting to speak and I'll go ahead and call on Lynn Segal. Lynn?
Yeah, I didn't even have time to prepare for what I was gonna say. You know what I'm gonna say each time. By the way, David, the water thing didn't work, you know, using extra water for my toilet, because I don't use any the water goes down the drain 90% of it, and I don't use the toilet five, every five minutes. It's not enough water to save. That is a phenomenal amount of water, and I brought it up with Rab too. And you know, we've got the Carter Pipeline and everything, and what you guys have to do, if you have to realize, water is life. CU is gonna stretch us to the end, and if you want, if you have any doubt, if you have any slightest doubt about voting against CU, however that means, the yes on the 302 and and then in a year, the the choice to say no. Or whatever, we have to have a third, a third ballot measure actually, because that just reverses the second one. It's just, it's just stunning what's going on with the city, the confusion of people. But if you have any doubt about CU, you watch 49 minutes from 3 hours 10 to 3 hours 49 at the Open Space Board of Trustees on the 13th of October, and you will have no doubt in your mind what to do about jumping CU and let them go to another state, let them start CU in Wyoming. I don't care what they do. I don't want them in Boulder. I don't want them up at up at the planning reserve either. And I know that's a big conundrum, but if you have any doubt, you watch that 49 minutes, and you're gonna have to watch it again and again and again and again, like I did, because it's complicated, super complicated, and Hal Holstein has his finger on the pulse. So you listen to that. Anyway, and we're losing our services. Now we've lost Salvalgias, we've lost Flanders. You know, every time I go down the street, it's another, what do you have, your eye on the thrift stores and on the car stores? And on what, you know, these are not sustainable to our community, because that's what's happened at Spruce and Folsom and Pearl. We've lost all our services and we're losing them. We lost them, you know, and there's an WW rental sign in that same space at Pearl and Folsom, just like 21st and Pearl, after I had to hunt him down. I had to hunt him down because he's an LLC. This is friggin ridiculous. There's two or three people that own this town, and they don't. We, the citizens, do, and we need our services here, and we don't need housing at every square foot, because that demands more services. Done.
Thank you, Lynn. All right, and I'm looking at the attendee list and I don't see any more hands up. So if I don't see one, I'll go ahead and do a last call, and welcome to the meeting, Georgie. Thank you.
Thank you, apologize for my delay.
Yeah, I hear that a meeting went over and that happens sometimes, so you got here just in time for the first content of the night, so. All right, well, with that then, we'll move on.
David, you may, I, you may have said this, but you just might want to remind the public that if they do want to speak about our matters item, this is the time to speak about it.
Yeah, I actually, I did mention it, but that's a good idea to reiterate. If there is anyone who was thinking of waiting to speak to either the call up or the matters item on code changes, you, this would be the your opportunity to do so, so. And I didn't see any hands, so with that, then we'll go on to item number four, which is discussion of dispositions, planning board call ups and continuations. We have one call up item tonight. Use review for an animal kennel use at the Human Main Society Building at 5320 Arapaho Avenue, Unit B. Will allow drug training classes, private behavior consultations in the existing 3,400 square foot tenant space. Proposed hours of operation 10 to 9 p.m., seven days a week, 10 a.m. to 9 p.m., seven days a week. Case number L U R 2021 dash 00034. So that call up expires today. Is there any interest in discussing that item or or any interest in calling it up? All right, pretty straightforward, so I don't think we see any interesting client up, so we can move on then. We have no public hearing items tonight, so we can go ahead and go to our matters item tonight, which is a work session to discuss proposed amendments to the land use code to update the site review criteria as part of the Community Benefit Code Change Project. And I'll hand it over to Jacob, Charles, and Carl.
Great, thanks very much, Dave. Good evening, members of the board. As you'll probably recall, the revisions to the city site review criteria is a council priority project that's been underway for about two years now. So frankly, we're a bit behind schedule just based on COVID-related staffing challenges, but we're really pleased to be making headway once again. And as one of the primary users of these criteria, we're especially pleased to be here tonight to collect your feedback and your thoughts. And we're really looking forward to your input and the conversation this evening, so with that said, I'm happy to turn it over to Carl Medler to present staff's analysis. Carl?
Carl, I think you're on mute. Good evening, board members. Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm gonna walk you through our presentation tonight. Obviously, there's a lot of information, so feel free to interrupt at any time if you have any questions. We're gonna be talking as a work session about the site review criteria update, so this is a city council work program priority that we're working on, as Charles mentioned. It's a subset of the Community Benefit Project. And it was really born out of the Design Excellence Initiative that that started several years ago in revamping several like land use code items or design guidelines throughout the city to try to get better design outcomes. So the purpose tonight is to have the board review the content of the memorandum and the draft language that we have at this time and ask any questions of staff based on the work that's been done. Advise staff on whether the proposed changes are consistent with the goals and objectives of the project and recommend any modifications to the language that we can consider and incorporate into the draft ordinance that we bring back to the planning board next month. So these are the questions that we have for the planning board tonight. Again, does planning board have any questions about the proposed site review criteria update? Does planning board agree that the updated criteria meets the goals and objectives of the project? And does planning board recommend any modifications to the criteria in the draft? So these are the original goals and objectives of the project that relates specifically to the site review criteria. Obviously, again, this is part of the Community Benefit Project, so these are the three that were were tailored to the site review criteria. So the first is identify incentives to address the community economic, social, and economic, or I'm sorry, environmental objectives of the comprehensive plan. Determine additional design standards that would apply to any height modification requests. Identify other aspects of the site review criteria to further city goals and create more predictability in projects. So the reason we have these these goals and objectives is really in reaction to some of the buildings that were coming up out of the ground, it's, we're looking at like six years ago now. And there were some concerns about the site review criteria applying to some of these projects and that we weren't getting necessarily predictable outcomes or great design outcomes. The site review criteria have not been revamped for many years, so it just seemed like the right time to take another look at the criteria and see where there could be some improvements. There's been some criticisms in some of the criteria related to the more subjective nature of the criteria, and that's what's led to us working on how do we make the criteria a little bit more prescriptive and a little bit, a little bit more predictable. So one thing I wanted to talk about is is kind of how we got here, so obviously, you know, as a case manager that's worked for the city for some time, and along with other case managers, we work with the site review criteria all the time, and so does the planning board, obviously, so when we're working on projects, we often, you know, find some wording changes that haven't been working well or are are found to be redundant. And so we've always been making notes in our land use codes, like how this could be improved, how could this be better written out to to make the expectation more clear. We've also gone out to some folks in neighborhoods as well as design professionals to talk about the criteria, and obviously, a lot of people don't work about in the nuts and bolts of the criteria all the time, but the design professionals do, and we did kind of go through and talk about what seemed to be working and what wasn't working. We've had a number of meetings where we kind of walked through the criteria and and we considered those changes in what we were proposing moving forward, so as a result of the analysis that's been ongoing, we've been doing some community outreach as part of this overall project, the Community Benefit Project, so we've talked to the community through public open houses on the Community Benefit Project, and that included the update to the site review criteria. We've worked with some focus groups that were composed of neighborhood representatives, design professionals, architects and planning consultants, as well as representatives of Boulder Housing Partners. We've provided updates through the PNDS newsletter. We've met with special interested groups in the city. We've also sent emails and links of the materials and the proposed language to architects in the Boulder community. We're also planning to hold some office hours in the coming weeks to to allow people to provide more feedback and answer any questions that people might have. As a result of what we've been hearing in our analysis, these are the approaches that we've taken to the criteria. We we feel that these are kind of the top approaches, so emphasizing criteria that result in projects that address important city policies, reorganizing the criteria to be a more top-down approach. By doing that, it means like starting at the top with more policy level criteria and then working our way down through the site design, how how that lays out, and then really then moving in on the building design to the real details of the detailing of the buildings and how to inform that, so it all kind of triples down to inform the site design. So we've also looked at simplifying the criteria to to reduce some of the length. There's a lot of redundant criteria in the site review criteria and basically combining them in areas where there's similar themes or goals, removing any kind of unnecessary complicated criteria that don't accomplish design excellence or excellence or overlap with other code sections or sections that have been rarely implemented because they just really haven't worked out, or again, because they're redundant. We've also wanted to add more descriptive language to the criteria to make them less subjective and just make them more prescriptive and measurable where appropriate to add to that level of predictability. The way, the way we kind of look at it is, you know, with the form-based code, I look at it like it either meets the requirement or it doesn't, so it's almost like an on-off switch. With the site review criteria, it's a little bit different. It's more like a knob. So if you imagine like knobs next to each criteria, it's like to what degree does the project meet these criteria, and I think each knob might be turned differently, so I think in this case we're hoping to maybe, you know, turn up the knob in terms of the level of prescriptiveness, but not necessarily be to the level of of form-based code where it's an on-off switch for all the criteria, so we've tried to make it more prescriptive in areas where it made sense. So I'm just gonna briefly go over the site review process and the criteria as we have it today. Planning board obviously understands that all site review applications require public notice. It's usually required if a project is over a certain size, or if the lot is over a certain size, or if the applicant elects to go through the process because they're requesting modifications to setbacks, things of that nature, or or a height modification, so there's certain site reviews that automatically require planning board, but they're actually in the minority. Most site reviews are staff level, but they all are subject to either citizen appeal or planning board call up. So we evaluate those projects based on the criteria that's listed out on this slide. If a project requires site review, it is held to a higher standard than a by right project, so there is an expectation for a higher level of quality in these projects. You can see there's a section that talks about compliance with the Boulder Valley Conference of Plan, and the way it's written right now is it says that you have to be consistent with the policies of the plan on balance, and we've heard some criticisms about that, just by the fact that it's very broad. It says on balance, there's a lot of competing policies in the comp plan that could be used to either approve or deny a project, depending on the degree at which they meet them, so we felt we had to address that. And then we have the site design section, which lists all the various things that inform the site, so open space landscaping, the circulation parking areas, and the building design, so we felt that this needed to be reorganized a bit in that top-down approach I was talking about. And also have a more emphasized building design section since it's kind of distinguished from the site design. So I'm gonna start talking about what changes we're proposing. So as I stated, the Boulder Valley Conference of Plan section has been a bit problematic in terms of the the subjective nature of it and how different decision makers might have different ideas of whether it meets it or not based on the range of of policies that are in the comp plan, so we tried to simplify this section a bit in terms of the language that relates to density, basically, you know, it just has to, it basically says that the the project has to meet the comprehensive plan, land use map. And we've also tried to make it more clear that, you know, if there is adopted plans, guidelines, and specific policies that apply to the site, that that those would be assessed in a site review, so just being a little bit more clear about that. But where we've changed this more so is instead of saying all policies in the plan on balance, we've actually picked out some key areas of the comp plan that would have specific criteria related to them, like energy conservation, preservation of historic and cultural resources, environmental preservation, and housing diversity, and actually have more specific criteria that would be a baseline for those criteria to be met. There was also some criteria that were in the building design section that I think has really become like a catch-all in recent years, if something hadn't gone well with a project and they felt like a new criterion would be necessary to demonstrate compliance, it's been added to the building design section, but some of them are really kind of related more to the design criteria in the comp plan, so we've moved those up to the BVCP section, so one of those is like gateway sites, like the diagonal crossing site had to be, had to show that there was a sense of arrival in the design of the project, being that it was on the the fringe of the city. Anything related to historic preservation or or site preservation, cut and fill criteria, like things to preserve the natural resources, has been moved up to this policy section. There's also a criterion on economic feasibility, which has always been a bit awkward for the city to respond to. I mean, I think the expectation is if an applicant is moving forward with a project, it's economically feasible. It's not the city that necessarily determines that, so we felt that this particular criterion hasn't made sense, and we're proposing that that be removed. I'm gonna move into the site design section now, so again, using this top-down approach. The thing that I think really informs a site is is the transportation and circulation, like how how is access to the site? And that that should be the the top thing to look at, so what we've done is we've taken the the circulation section and the parking section on the design, and we've combined them and we've moved them up to be an access, transportation, and mobility section, and I wouldn't say that this is necessarily all that different in the intents. We've just tried to write the language to be a little bit more descriptive as to what is the expectation of the city, so we've tried to make it clear that, you know, if there's any connections plans that apply to the site that they would, that those connections would be fulfilled. So obviously, a larger project may have to actually build new roadways and new sidewalks, new multi-use paths to meet those connections plans, but we've also made it a little bit more explicit about, you know, just in the theme of connectivity between sites, if there's no connections plans, and if there's opportunities, you know, like a connection between two adjacent parking lots, that that be considered also in the site review, and that's not explicit in the site review criteria now and is more so in the in the draft language. We've also looking to take out some redundant criteria in the open space section. A lot of it's getting at the same thing, and we've tried to again be more descriptive in what the expectation is in terms of the level of quality that an open space must be. We've also tried to add some thresholds because there's some criteria that relate to larger projects that probably don't make sense on smaller projects, like there's courtyard space requirements that can apply to a larger site, so if it's over a certain size, I think we have an acre in there, they would have to provide a like a courtyard type space that has certain seating and tree plantings. If it's, if there's a project that's over 100 dwelling units, there's an expectation for active recreation, but we also list out some new options for active recreation on those sites. Right now, we just have a criterion that says that, you know, active recreation is is provided where practical, practicable, but it doesn't actually have a threshold in there, so again, just trying to be a little bit more specific. We've also been trying to get rid of some of the more subjective terms of language in the criteria that we've been struggling with and being a little bit more specific about what it means, so one, one example is the highlighted language. If you see that on the slide, that's existing language that we've found to be quite subjective, so providing relief to density. I think people can come to different conclusions on whether that's met. In this case, it's, we've tried to add some criteria that's a little bit more specific about what that means to transition from a higher intensity project down to a lower intensity project. One thing we've struggled with is in the landscape criteria. We just say that the landscaping on the site has to be in excess of by right standards, but we don't have a metric there, so in consultation with our landscape architect, we we came to, you know, the most reasonable thing would be to require that there be an increase in the number of plantings above the by right that you would normally see by 15%, and that that would have a commensurate level of extra area that would have to be landscaped, and that that would be a better standard than just saying in excess. Moving on, this is kind of a new section, the public realm and building placement. In the building design section, we have some language that talks about how buildings relate to the public realm when we use the terms human scale, attractive streetscape, provides pedestrian interest. Again, these are all right, relatively vague terms. So we want to be more explicit or more descriptive on what would meet those expectations, so we to try to create a bridge from site design to building design, we created a new public realm and building placement section, so this would just talk about, you know, when built, buildings in general should be oriented towards the street and that they should have defined entries. And that there should be entries every 50 feet along those those streetscapes, and just more specific language about, you know, an expectation of of window glazing or fenestration in those areas. I'm also saying that, you know, if there's a project with new buildings, that the expectation is that parking areas should be de-emphasized from, emphasized from the streetscape and not be placed in front of buildings. Obviously, existing buildings would be evaluated, you know, differently. Another thing we looked at as part of public realm was view protection. There's an existing criteria that just talks about views are preserved where possible, basically, and it doesn't really get specific about what views, so in this case, we've tried to be a little bit more specific about talking about views of the mountains and that, you know, views of the mountains would be more protected from public spaces. It wouldn't necessarily apply in all cases. We can't, there's cases where, you know, you have a three-story, single-family house that potentially could block a view with a flatiron. That's under the height limit. We don't want to create this expectation that that, you know, that a person can't reasonably build up, you know, on their property to the the height limit, so we've tried to be a little bit more specific that you know, if there's a larger project and they're eliminating a view, either they try to preserve the view from a public space that that is on the site, or that they have an elevated space within the building that would enable people to have visibility of the view towards the mountains. So moving into building design, this is probably the area where we're seeing more changes, just because a lot of the building design criteria now again, are somewhat subjective with the use of, you know, that the building has authentic materials in its usage, that the building creates a sense of permanence. So in this case, we wanted to draw from things we've learned and implemented in the form-based code to kind of have a baseline level of quality in building design, so in this case, we're proposing that buildings in site review would In this case, we're we're proposing uh that buildings in site review would have seventy five percent. Of the building facades composed of high quality materials and we list those. As brick, stone, wood, high density panel systems, high pressure laminate, cementitious or composite siding. Or architectural metal panels. Um and basically trying to uh decrease the 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 lower quality things like ethos. Or low quality stucco. Um we also have noticed that, you know, people react to how building material transitions occur on buildings. And that building transitions should be a- away from the public facing facades, not. And and that those transitions would occur at interior corners and you'll you'll see from. Um a bunch of pictures that I have here in the slide deck. So. In terms of material quality, um here's some slides. So on on these slides. The slide, the pictures on the left are designs we're trying to avoid. And then the slides on the right are those that we're trying to encourage. So. In this case, you can see some examples of some buildings that. Uh use like ethos or stucco and and appearing uh in lower quality and you see comparatively. Um buildings with stone or metal um as their primary uh materials. And the site review criteria would would get more at this. This is an example of material transitions. Um. We've heard criticisms of certain buildings where the material transitions on the facade. Um so through the form based code, um it was changed, the code was changed to to not permit that unless. It was at an interior corner around the corner of a building module. Um away from the public facing facade, or if there was like so an offset. Uh between the 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 building um modules. So you can see here, um some designs we're hoping to. Avoid and then you can see these examples uh do not have those material transitions. Um as shown. So we've also looked at windows, again, drawing from the form based code. Um there'd be a minimum transparency requirement per floor. Uh the the standard is twenty percent of the floor. So you basically do an area calculation. Of that floor and then there's the hole, the holes for the windows and that would have to. Be a minimum of twenty percent and obviously a higher. Amount of transparency in storefront walkable areas, so up to seventy five percent of that ground floor. Um we've also drawn in the form based code requirement that there be no blank walls wider than fifteen feet. Um and another thing that we've noticed is is that. The depth, the distance between like the plane of the window and the face of the material. The closer they are together, the the lower the quality looks, it it tends to look like you'll have like brick veneer. On a facade or you'll have a window that's flush. With like the stucco, it just does not have a sense of permanence to it, whereas when you have that two inch offset, it it. It is higher quality looking. So you'll, I'll show some examples of that. So here you can see, um firstly. On the the left hand side is the blank walls that we're we're trying to avoid in designs. Um by having that minimum transparency requirement. So some examples. On the right side are those projects where the upper floors have to meet. That twenty percent and we we review elevation drawings to to demonstrate that. And then you can see on certain ground floors, not all. Um there's a higher level of glazing um in those mercantile retail retail areas. This is the example of the window depth I was just talking about. So you can see on the. The left hand side, you see the windows are flush with the materials on the side and it just. Has a a cheaper look to it. It just doesn't have as much of an enduring look to it. Um so that two two inch offset, I think, actually goes a long way to. Make buildings look higher quality in combination. With the materiality on the buildings and the um detailing that I'll also talk about. Balconies has been another concern, particularly in the larger projects. So this is focused more on like. The non-single family residential or smaller scale projects, more like the multifamily. Where you have these tacked on balconies. Um that aren't really integrated into the building. So we're proposing site review criteria that would um take that. Baseline thing from the ba- the the form base code. And requiring their integration into the building. So on the left, you can see kind of the tacked on. Um balcony appearance as well as the Juliet balconies. Um or the the balconies that one viewed from beneath have the open slats. Um so we, the criteria are written to um. Basically require that that area be the slats be covered. Um with a with a a material, so it's that it doesn't drop water through. And that their design has to be a certain percentage attached to the building. Um so it's more integrated into the design. And again, this is, this is going to be focused on the larger scale projects. Then we get to detailing, um. New building detailing requirements uh from the form based code. Uh we call them expression lines there. It's basically just. A real basic way of adding some variation to a facade. To avoid those blank walls and and flat walls, where you have basically like the windows, you have a two inch offset. Of a material and how it's laid up, or it might be a a change in material for a band. Uh just to add some visual interest of to the facade. So. You can see some examples here. Again, these are fa- facades that. Um don't necessarily have the expression line with the two inch offset to give any um. Visual interest, whereas on the right hand side, you see. The implementation of the form base code where you have a change in banding. And it can be horizontal or vertical. In the case of the form based code, it requires. An expression line horizontally between the ground floor and the floor above. And then if there's a building that's over four stories. There's a requirement for a a band between a fourth and a fifth floor. And then if there's an upper. If there's like a parapet, there has to be some sort of band within two feet. Of that uh top of the building. You can see in the upper left. You know, it just, it looks kind of odd when a building just kind of terminates at the top without any kind of. Detailing. So this expression line would be trying to get at that. So speaking of taller buildings, one of the the um. Goals of the project was is to increase the requirements. That would apply to the design of buildings that are over the height limit. So any. Height modification requests that come through site review. Would now be subject to um some of the same requirements that are in the form based code that we've seen. Implemented in the Boulder Junction area. So. In the site review today, there's no. Specific criteria that relate to buildings over the height limit, other than. The phase one requirements of community benefit. So obviously, a certain percentage. Of the building would have to be permanently affordable housing or higher in Lufi. Um this would actually get it adding new criteria that would apply just to buildings that are over the height limit. So. Again, there's, there's an increased number of requirements for expression lines. Uh there's, there's actual vertical. Expression lines that have to be on buildings every sixty feet. There's a maximum building length of a hundred and fifty feet that we've drawn. Uh from the form based code. So again, trying to get at those block long buildings that have caused people concern. Um like on Canyon and and areas like along twenty eighth street. Um there's a requirement for facade variation. Um if a building is greater than a hundred and twenty feet in length, at least every ninety feet, there has to be some. Level of variation between the facades. Again, we we wrote the code. To not result in these really busy facades where. In the past, we said, you know, there needs to be some mass reduction. And changes in materials to add to the visual interest. And you get these really busy. Buildings that uh we've called ransom note buildings. You know, there's just a lot of different materials. Um in this case, we've tried to write it so that there's simplicity. I mean, with these taller buildings. We're really trying to get at the basic, you know, there's a base, there's a middle and there's a top. And that this required facade variation would just require certain. You know, minor changes, it might be color, it might be material or an offset in the facades, but. Generally, a a simple way of just creating that facade variation without making the buildings look too busy. Another requirement we've drawn in from the form base code for these taller buildings is just the roof cap type. So obviously, there's, there'd be specific. Um requirements for if you have a flat roof, there's actual a minimum depth. Of the, like you can see up in the picture, the the flat roof areas actually have like an eve. That sticks out. If you have a parapet like on the left side of the picture, you have to have that expression line. Within two feet of the top to kind of cap it off. Um and then obviously encouraging uh pitch droves in these buildings. Obviously, um with more prescriptive requirements. Uh and and the recognition that not all, you know, buildings are the same and not all sites are the same. Um that we we should be with these new requirements, adding some flexibility to the code. So. The way other communities deal with it and the way we've dealt with it in the form based code is some level of alternative compliance. So we do have a criteria. Uh a criterion in the code that we call alternative compliance and. It sets up criteria for where people can ask for for exceptions to these. Requirements and obviously, you know, this is necessary for special purpose buildings like hospitals, schools, civic buildings or industrial. Uh manufacturing buildings. I mean, the basic criteria ba- basically says that, you know, the alternative that that the applicant proposes still meets. The purposes and intents of the site review. Um and that they'd have to show that it it would be an innovative way to meet. Uh comp plan policies and that any change would be compatible with or would improve upon. Uh the character of the area. So again, just like the form based code, we're hoping that this would be, you know, limited use, but would be only be available for those site. And building design standards that I've been discussing tonight. So this, we now move on to the the land use intensity modifications. This is something that we've discussed with the. Planning board before. Um there was some interest. Um from council members um and some board members to move forward. With the land use intensity modifications that we had proposed as part of the the last iteration of the community benefit project. Um so I'll briefly go over those, happy to answer any questions, but. The BR one, the business regional one, the high density uh RH five. And the the business community two zones all have one thing in common. They have a. Uh one unit for sixteen hundred square foot of land area requirement for each unit. Uh and we've heard from from many in the community that this. Creates a bit of a deterrent from doing smaller. Units and we wanted to create some sort of incentive. For affordable units in certain areas of the city and and given that these. Zones are the areas that are in the comp plan where additional housing is incentivized. Uh we wanted to provide an incentive through these criteria. So what. We're proposing is that if an applicant proposes any permanently affordable units. On site that that those would be waived from the total. Density calculation. Again, all of these requests would be subject to compliance with other. Parts of the zoning code like parking, open space. Uh and would require planning board approval at a public hearing. And would be subject to all the site review criteria. So. Um this would be one way to kind of incentivize onsite affordable units. Um with a similar uh intent. Sarah?
I have a question. Um can you just, thank you so much. Can I, can you just clarify? Um we know from experience and from the regulations that onsite is not something that can be. Required and um developers can decide up to the last minute. Whether they're going to do onsite or um cash in lieu. So I want to make sure that I'm understanding. This new density modification that's proposed. Uh how how would it guarantee? Onsite affordability?
Well, once it, obviously, there's comprehensive planning policies that. Are very specific to creating incentives in the land use code for permanently affordable housing. So we're following that. We followed that with the community benefit. Phase one project. So just like that portion of the code, if a developer does come in. With this type of project and has onsite affordables, there would be a condition of approval. That would require the onsite unit to make sure that this happens. If they were to come in later and say, oh. This doesn't pencil out and we can't do it. Um they would have to amend their site review um and get rid of that condition of approval. Uh or they would have to build the the project without those onsite units with the lower density.
So the, so. Uh what would be approved in site review? Could not be altered uh moving forward is, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, there would be a condition of approval. So they wouldn't be able to like get approval for it. And then after, oh, go, oh, we're just going to pay in in Lufi for that. It would actually, they would, they wouldn't meet that condition of approval for the onsite. So they would have to amend the the approval to. Change the density.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
So the same applies for for BC one. Uh BC one's a little bit of a different zone uh in that it it's open space. Per unit. So in that case, it it requires twelve hundred. Square feet of open space per unit. So in this case, we're proposing. That, you know, of, and again, this is not like going to be for, this does not mean that a permanently affordable units. In and of themselves would have smaller amounts of open space. It's just the total amount of open space. For the project usually gets aggregated for these. Projects. It's just the, it it factors into the total, but this would allow. Just a fifty percent reduction for any permanently affordable units to incentivize them. So we felt that this was appropriate since there's many high density zones. In the city that have six hundred square feet of open space per unit. So again, it just would factor into the calculation on how much overall open space is provided on the site. We've also did the open space requirement as it relates to the more kind of urban walkable. Zones in the city, so like the downtown zones, the BMS zone, the business main street and the MU three zone, which is. Uh East Pearl. So when you have a higher. Open space requirement on those sites, it tends to interfere with just the urban typology of those areas. You know, obviously, you want to have those buildings built up to the street. You know, with the with the storefront windows up against the sidewalk, that's the typology. Um and what we've seen in some projects is they, the applicant will elect to push the building back and put this kind of. Not very well designed open space in front of the building and pushing it back and that that. Doesn't really make sense in these areas. So we felt that we should add some flexibility. In the code in these instances where they could ask for up to a fifty percent. Reduction in the open space. If it means that it, that they wouldn't be able to achieve that urban typology in those areas. Sarah?
I'm sorry about that. I'm I'm um so. Uh one of the things, you know, I keep bringing up is urban trees and um. One of the challenges of the urban typology where the building itself is pushed right up to the sidewalk is the absence. Of urban trees and um or what I would call free range trees. Um so I'm I'm just curious, I'd like to know a little bit more whether now or later. Um about the conversations that staff has had about the. Uh impact of the urban form on our need for um tree canopy to address. Uh urban heat island effect and and where, what's the balance there?
I think one way that we've actually tried to address that, and you might remember that we did a code change, I think last year. That did does not permit building, like buildings including the subterranean parts of parking garages to encroach. Into the landscape setback. So if you remember that we've seen some projects that come in, particularly in the downtown where the building is at the the setback. That the landscape setback mark, but the parking garage underneath actually goes all the way out to the end to the property line and that. Reduces where the roots can go for the building. So we changed the code to say that that landscape setback actually. Applies to subterranean elements as well with the intent of making, you know, more, you know, soil for the trees.
But I guess what I meant, I so thank you for, I didn't, I did not remember that code change. Um but uh. I I guess I'm I'm by reducing the um. Oh, the fifty, by reducing by fifty percent the open space requirements because what has, because. What seems to have happened is. Oddly shaped or oddly located open space. Um I just wonder if maybe the one way to think about it is just to require. More thoughtfully designed open space rather than um. Eliminating the fifty percent or not eliminating, um um diminishing. By fifty percent the open space requirement. I I'm. Because I do think that the anyways, that that's just a thought I'm putting out there.
Yeah, I mean, we we already do have some sections of the code, a little bit of flexibility in these areas. Um like there are certain instances where you can count more of the elevated open space in the building to count. In that open space requirements as to not strain. You know, the ground area in these urban areas. So there are like a a number of mechanisms to deal with that and try to get better. Uh open space, but I I see your point.
And Sarah, I just wanted to add one other thing. In twenty eighteen, uh the city adopted a urban forest strategic plan. Recognizing that we're going to lose a significant amount of tree canopy to Emerald Ash Borbeetle. Then includes a number of strategies that are being. Then includes a number of strategies that are being implemented um, to help um, restore and maintain the canopy. Um, but your comments aren't lost on me. Um, Jacob and I were actually in a meeting this morning where we were talking about tree grates in an urban street typology versus um, open planting areas. Um, and the uh, programming needs of, you know, um, how well the tree is going to survive in a great versus people trampling um, you know, all over the open planting area. So it's definitely something that's on our radar and we're also um, in the middle of preparing for an update to the city's designing construction standards, um, which I think will be an excellent time to take up um, our tree planning methodology, the use of silver cells. Um, and you know, other methodologies that help to improve soil volume. Um, and and embed that in our regulations. So it's something that we're definitely aware of.
I really appreciate that.
And John has a question as well.
Yeah, thank you. Um, with respect to the the first two uh, suggested changes that you made with regarding open space requirements and the relation of those to affordable housing. I'm just wondering uh, if this is going to lead to uh, problems where we fail to provide sufficient open space specifically in those areas with the greatest need for it. Uh, that is to say, for example, the the relatively dense affordable housing projects that we're seeing these days. So I I'm just wondering how how we deal with that uh, and what your thoughts are on that.
Man, I think the logic on that is, you know, again, we're talking about the BC one zone. So there's a pretty high open space requirement per per unit, which in and of itself provides like a disincentive for housing at the twelve hundred per unit. So there's several zones in the code that have a requirement of six hundred uh, square feet of open space per unit. That's in many of the RH zones. So what we're suggesting is basically using that as the baseline. And I don't know that we've necessarily seen that those particular projects haven't provided um, enough open space. I think the issue is that we feel that the BC one zones in particular have a very high open space requirement.
Okay, well, I I guess we can talk about it among ourselves later, but I I would say especially given the conversation we had on on the diagonal uh, changes that that was an issue that came up there and it would be interesting to see how we deal with it elsewhere as well.
Yeah, questions before I move on?
Yeah, can I ask one clarifying question? Um, uh, on, I'm sorry, could you go back one slide just to?
Sure.
So on that BC one zoning district modification, just to clarify for myself, that that is, we're not adding any additional affordable units. We're simply the the modification has only to do with putting the affordable units onsite. Is that correct?
So you know, so based on the design of a project, there'd be a certain amount of open space that would be required. And that's what's tough about these zones that have an open space per dwelling unit requirement because it's wholly based on the zone, but it would give a little bit of flexibility for trying to add more permanently affordable uses on top of their total um, with this um, reduction.
So, so sorry, just to clarify. So there, so i- in this case, if they got this modification, um, they would need to commit to having the permanently affordable units onsite, but there wouldn't.
We would, we'd, we'd have to call it out as a as a land use intensity modification, and there would have to be a condition of approval that would have a baseline for that requirement that would be part of the site review.
How does um, the community benefit layer into this modification?
I mean, you, you might be able to see a project that gets a height modification because it has affordable units in it and may also be able to request this open space reduction as well. I think that's a possibility.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
So this is the map, the zoning map that shows the zones that we're talking about. So you can see that based on the the areas where these zones are located, they are what we find to be appropriate areas that are consistent with the comp plan as to where additional housing, especially affordable housing should be located. So particularly, you know, in you know, the downtown uh, and the Boulder Valley Regional Center, which is that area in the middle of the city um, that's labeled BR one uh, as well as along our multimodal corridors and within our neighborhood centers. So we felt that these were appropriate areas to allow these uh, modifications. But I wanted to talk about the last modification here, which relates to the BR one zone. So if you go in the land use code now, there's actually a pretty lengthy section in the site review criteria that relates to the BR one zone, and it actually enables an applicant to go up to a four point O FAR uh, in the city um, on a site. Um, if specific criteria are met, um, this is the highest allowance of FAR that exists in the city. Um, the next highest would really be the two point seven that you have uh, downtown area. So in this case, we've always felt that the criteria for that, for those bonuses in very redundant with other site review criteria in terms of building design quality, open space quality. Uh, and as well as the fact that in most cases, when you're designing a building that can't go over the height limit, has to meet certain landscaping requirements, certain open space requirements, parking requirements. It's very unlikely they would get anywhere close to a four point O. Um, and we found that those criteria are largely, you know, again, redundant and not met. So what we're proposing as part of this change would be actually changing that zone to have a maximum of three point O FAR. And that if there is any requests to go over a two point O FAR, which is, which is already in the code, that 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 range between would just have to meet the community benefit requirement. So that extra floor area would be subject to a higher number of permanently affordable units or a higher commercial linkage fee. Um, so it would just reference that existing part of the code. Um, so that's what we're proposing for BR one. So another thing we talked about, if you recall, when we.
Sorry, Carl, just one question on that. What is actually feasible to to what you're saying, the currently even though the 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 max is four point O in that particular zone, what?
Good question. I mean, I I think in my time here, what I've seen um, is, you know, very little amounts over two point O. So I've seen up to maybe two point two. It's usually pretty difficult to go much more than that. And again, the the additional criteria, we've not really necessarily found to be resulting in high level design quality.
Thanks.
One thing we talked about when we talked about the appendix J map, if you remember, the the appendix J map was uh, designating where the community benefit requirements uh, were limited to in the city. Um, if you recall, we talked about extending that map. So that is since expired. It expired on August thirty first. So technically, the entire city is open to requests for community benefit or additional height uh, on projects. So again, this doesn't mean that the city is going to automatically approve, uh, you know, four or five story buildings in areas that are not appropriate, or it's not consistent with the context. It would still would require planning board uh, review and approval. Uh, and there would have to be some consistency with the character around those projects, but be based on the concern that the city was opened up, there was some interest on the planning board as well as some on council that we do restrict it from certain zoning districts. So part of the language that we're proposing uh, that we're going to discuss tonight um, is the zones that are shown up on the screen. So you can see largely the 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 low intensity, low density residential uh, zones uh, are proposed to be excluded from the community benefit project, um, mobile home zones, the agricultural zones. Um, the only thing that's different is that there are some um, there has been some guidance that perhaps RMX, like the mixed density uh, zone or the transitional business zones, which are those small pink zones that are along like Broadway and at baseline and and twenty eighth uh, might be appropriate places for height modifications and that perhaps we shouldn't exclude those. Um, but our our current language is most of these zones that are that are shown up on the screen. Um, that would be excluded from requests for the community benefit or the height modification. This is another component that we had talked about last time. There, there's an existing section in the site review section. Uh, not within the criteria that we were proposing to change uh, in the prior ordinance uh, that that didn't move forward that we felt were still appropriate to talk about. So there's a section before the criteria that just basically lays out some exemptions from the community benefit requirements. So this is really mostly targeted at buildings that are under four stories that may need a height modification that should be exempt from the community benefit requirements. And it's in instances where like where you have the grade descending away from a building where we measure the low point out twenty five feet away from the building, it might make it difficult for them to add a third story that would ordinarily be allowable, and they can request a height modification without having to do community benefit. So what we're proposing, and I'll I'll start at the bottom, is just the the flood exemption that's similar to that. We've had some instances where there's buildings that have to be raised up out of um, to get their their base flood elevation raised above the base flood elevation. So um, that requires the building to shift up, and it might be a three story building, but goes over the thirty five foot height limit. So we wanted to allow a little bit of flexibility that they could ask for a height modification, still would have to go to planning board, public hearing. Um, but allow some flexibility, they could go up to um, five feet over the zoning district height limit if it's required to be elevated um, for flood protection.
Hey, Carl, on on a question like that, because pertinent to what we're going to be seeing, um, would would like something like Alpine Balsam that's in a portion of the flood with that, would that be one of those things that would see a flood exception like that potentially?
It it could. Um, again, if they start doing four and five stories, then they're just going to be subject to the community benefit regulations.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, the top part is is an existing part of the code, the current IH language inclusionary housing. So we have a provision in there that's really targeted at trying to capture, you know, projects like Boulder Housing Partners or Thistle Projects where they're providing largely, you know, a hundred percent affordable projects that they have some flexibility um, in asking for a height modification. Um, we wanted to tighten up the existing language just to make it clear that not only does forty percent of the floor area have to be devoted to permanently affordable housing, that the project be at least forty percent of the units are provided as permanently affordable uh, units. So we we felt that this was necessary just to tighten up um, that particular requirement. Again, this would mostly capture uh, those kind of BHP type projects. Alright, so we we've, we've talked to our focus groups on these particular changes and um, talked about what the changes would look like in terms of the level of, you know, prescriptive type elements. And we've gotten kind of a range of opinions uh, that I just wanted to touch on. So um, there were some folks that we talked to that felt that the new updated criteria would provide uh, greater clarity in reviews and would result uh, in a higher level of predictability. Uh, there were some that felt that the changes were um, consistent with the original goals of the project and that they would more effectively further the goals of the comp plan. Although we did hear from some folks that felt like the changes would be uh, too prescriptive um, with little flexibility. I I think there was a certain level of expectation of how prescriptive they would be. And I think there were some that we talked to that felt um, that they were more prescriptive than they had expected. Um, but we did talk to some others uh, in the architectural community that felt that they supported um, some of the basic design standards that we're pulling in um, from the form based code. Um, but then there were others that we talked to that were more cautious about those um, particular requirements and a little bit skeptical of how like alternative compliance might work. Uh, we've, we've heard some support from the development community on some of the land use intensity modifications uh, in encouraging more permanently affordable housing. Um, although there were some that we talked to that felt, you know, that perhaps there could be some unintended consequences in these designs or requests. Um, some questions that came up too is just concern about the added expense that might be added to projects to meet these higher qualitative requirements, particularly in regards to, you know, like the building materials or the window requirements. Uh, there were concerns about how these criteria could impact smaller developers in the community. Um, and there was also concern about how these new criteria would apply to previously approved projects. So we we might need to um, add a provision in the amendments part of site review to maybe say that like we do with other code sections that uh, uh, prior approvals before a certain date uh, would would still be evaluated based on the prior uh, site review criteria and that any new projects after a certain date might would be subject to the new criteria. So that's something that we're looking into. So just uh, in closing, just making the argument uh, that we feel like that the criteria updates do meet the goals and objectives of the project. Um, the new language would more clearly state the level of expectation of quality in these reviews. We we feel that one of the problems with site review is if you have vague criteria, there's a lot of back and forth that occurs between um, the city and applicants prior to even coming to planning board to try to work to get to that level of quality. And we feel like if the criteria are updated to be more explicit about what that means, that perhaps there would be less of that uh, back and forth that occurs in the reviews. Um, we feel that uh, the criteria remove the redundancy and vagueness in many of the criteria. Um, there's more, there's new criteria that would more explicitly state how a project would meet the goals of the comp plan. Uh, there would be new design standards, as I spoke of, that would apply to buildings that are requesting uh, height modifications. So that's that, those massing requirements, the building length, um, higher level of detailing, variation with simplicity uh, and the cap types. Uh, it would introduce more prescriptive design standards that are borrowed from the the form based code um, to to ensure baseline levels of quality would be met and increase the level of predictability. Uh, we feel despite this, that there would be um, flexibility afforded with the alternative compliance criterion that I spoke of. And we also feel that the land use intensity modifications would be a way to incentivize uh, more permanently affordable housing and even just smaller, you know, housing in in certain areas of the city where we'd like to see the the housing units in the Boulder Valley Regional Center, neighborhood centers and along multimodal corridors. So basically, uh, tonight, we just wanted to hear back from from the board, the thoughts about the direction we're headed um, and requests for any modifications to the language, other areas to look at. Um, and then start working on the creation of the ordinance. Um, our hope is to return to planning board on November eighteenth with an ordinance. Um, the goal was to try to move forward on this since it was a city council priority um, and try to complete it, you know, around the end of the year. So right now, this is the schedule. Uh, we go to planning board on November eighteenth and then follow up with first and second reading at council uh, through December, January. So I will conclude with um, the questions um, to the planning board, if it'll allow me to move the slide. Questions?
All right. So um, yeah, I guess there, yeah, there they are. So yeah, okay. Well, thank you, Carl, for uh, for that comprehensive uh, presentation and uh, we'll go ahead and uh, since number one, if question number one is, what are the questions about this uh, proposal? Let's go ahead and do that. And I think, Sarah, did you want to kick us off?
Yeah, first of all, thank you so, so much. This was really interesting. Um, I'm going to leave aside the questions about the specific building design um, guidelines and maybe focus on some of the density questions. And I guess I'll start with a kind of a framework. I'm trying to understand the implications of the density revisions on the city's ability to uh, generate um, the housing diversity that we know we need um, to meet the needs of of um, residents and commuters who might want to live here. Um, could my my sense is, and it's just a sense, and if it's incorrect, please, please let me know that with the revisions to the proposed revisions to to density requirements, what we're gonna do is, and what we're going to end up with is a lot more rental apartment buildings or rental units in. rental apartment buildings or rental units in large apartment buildings. And while, yes, we need housing, we really need housing that meets the needs of a lot of different types of people at different stages of life. So what's your sense of whether or not this does drive us in that direction? I guess that's my fundamental question right now.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that, because the site review criteria right now have a criterion that says that the project provides a diversity of housing types, but it doesn't really have like a baseline as to what percentage or how much. So that's something that we're still kind of working on and honestly struggling with just. But we would like to come back with a housing diversity criterion that would say, you know, if you have a project that's over a certain size, that it would have to provide at least two different types of housing types and have a minimum percentage or a minimum number. And we're trying to figure out where that line is. And we're also looking at, you know, in trying to encourage more smaller units like that we've been hearing about, but also trying to address the need for more family housing, that maybe it's the type of units within a building that there might be a higher range in three-unit buildings versus one-unit buildings. So that's something that we're still working through. I think in the draft, I think in Attachment C, you can kind of see the workings of it. We are pulling from the existing RMX 2 zone, which is in North Boulder, that has those minimal requirements. And we talked about it on the Use Table Subcommittee. So we're trying to draw from that and get like kind of like a baseline criteria that would get at that. We're hoping to have that figured out when we come back in November.
Can I just do a follow-up, David? And then I'll, which has to, I'm really appreciate you bringing up the Use Table review work that David led that was so important. I wonder a bit about sequencing here, in terms of sequencing in terms of what kinds of policies we're putting in place. Because it's my understanding from the applicants I have spoken with, not in a planning board setting, that they will build what they are allowed to build. And one of the things that was so powerful about the Use Table was the opportunity to, the Use Table review work was the opportunity to revise what is allowed in a particular area, particularly the BC1, BC2, the high-density areas, the neighborhood center areas. And so I guess I'm just wondering whether changing the site review criteria should come before we've addressed the Use Table allowances or whether the Use Table allowances should come first and then be followed by the site review criteria so that we've begun to move in the direction of creating the opportunity for and the framework for an actual diversity of housing, not just three apart, three-bedroom apartments versus efficiencies, but actually townhomes and small, single-family homes as well as apartment buildings in those areas where we have the most opportunity for redevelopment.
I think there's different opinions on this matter. I think my own thoughts on this is that a better way at getting at diversity of housing would be through the site review criteria. You know, you know, from the Use Table, it's just like a, you know, a long list of allowable uses. And it doesn't necessarily have anything within it that relates to diversity of housing, other than it might allow a certain number of housing types. So it doesn't mean that someone's going to look at the Use Table and say, oh, I'm just going to do all this use or two different housing types. So I think review criteria would be a better way at getting at that.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe I'll jump in and because my question actually kind of tags on to what you're thinking about. BC1, BC2 really jump out at me when I look at these things. And we've felt a lot of, I think, pain points about, you know, that we would like, with Use Table Subcommittee, like Sarah pointed out, and we'd like to see more interesting residential opportunities in conjunction with more walkable outcomes and less emphasis on parking. And I live really close to two of these. One is Meadows and one is Bass Mar. So those are two that are kind of, in my opinion, have the danger of heading towards where Diagonal is going, because we see storefronts closing. So and I am, I'm leading up to a question that we just saw with Diagonal, this reduction in the open space in BC1, which seems to be something that can kind of make it difficult to put a lot of housing in, but also there seem to be a lot of other moving parts. This 50% reduction, if you put affordable on, is still a lot less than what we did with the special ordinance for Diagonal, right? That's just, it is not anywhere near as, you know, kind of large is what we did to enable that project, right?
I believe that's correct. You know, we were working on changes to the BC1 zone well in advance of knowing the details of what the Diagonal Plaza project would be. So, you know, we weren't necessarily writing the zone to accommodate that project, but we did know that that was an area where it would be great to incentivize housing. So that's why we were working on it.
That was a bigger, a bigger reduction in the open space requirements than what we're looking at here in terms of the process, the board.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. More questions? John?
Yeah. I'd like to question, there were a couple issues that you raised, not related to the open space requirements, and I'll certainly get back to that also. But I'd like to clarify that. One of the first things you mentioned was economic feasibility and that that's not something that the city typically addresses, that it's a, that it's a something that the developer will worry about. And I wonder if there's some, we need to distinguish between the term economic and the term financial feasibility. I think typically the developer is mostly concerned with the financial feasibility of the project and whether he's going to make a profit on it or something like that. But the economic feasibility is something that the city needs to be concerned about, because the city may be obliged to incur terrific, some significant expenses in order to make that, that whatever development we're dealing with move ahead. I'm just thinking of, for example, increasing the size of wastewater and water pipes and maybe changing the transportation system in some way that will make that place a more satisfying and livable place to live. So from that viewpoint, I think that the economic concerns are still valid. And please correct me if I, if I am misunderstanding, but I'm, I think there's a difference between financial and economic.
I mean, one option is certainly to leave that existing criteria in the site review criteria. It's just, I think a lot of us from reviewing projects and even talking to applicants about this particular criterion, we've not really necessarily found it helpful. And a lot of people don't even know how to respond to it in a lot of ways. It, I mean, it says, "The proposed development success in meeting the broad range of comp plan policies considers the economic feasibility of implementation techniques required to meet other site review criteria." I mean, most of the time, our answer to that is that, you know, the project has been designed and the applicant has, you know, determined that it's feasible to move forward and still can meet the criteria. And it's a, you know, that's typically the response. We just don't know how helpful it really is to keep in there.
Okay, well, anyway, we can, we can talk about it later. But I, it seems to me there is a distinction between the developer's financial picture and the city's economic picture that we need to be aware of. Thank you.
Kind of a follow-up on that.
I have another.
And a follow-up on John's question, a little bit different. And being new to the planning board, it'd be helpful to get some perspective on this. So since I've been on the planning board, almost everything I think that's come across has been large rental developments. And so getting back to that economic and social component to the, to what currently exists. I know that it's not necessarily, I want to understand what the city's ability is or where we do this to, along with the diversity of housing is sort of how that housing is set up, whether it's for sale or rental, because that is a big social and economic component that we face as a community. I don't know if this is the place to do it, but I'm just curious to get your thoughts on it.
I might have to defer to Hella on this, because I think there might be fair housing concerns related to whether something is versus ownership.
I didn't catch the full question. Are you asking if there are already places where we're requiring?
Yeah, I guess my question is, when I, when I, you know, it's all up to interpretation about how this, this language is vague, probably for a reason. And, and as, as what I'm seeing happening in the development community at large, as well as what's happening in Boulder, is we're getting a lot of rental housing. Everything that we've seen that's come across has almost been exclusively rental. And I think there is a large portion of the community that's concerned about the kind of housing that's being delivered from a diversity perspective, not only from the sort of types of housing, but what availability there is of this housing that's being created for our residents to create their own wealth through real estate by having opportunities to purchase instead of just being perma-renters. And so that's where I'm trying to get to. It's big, it's obviously it's a big issue and question. And so I want to know how and if we can address it in something like this.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't looked at that for this project at this point in time, but we could explore that. The only place where I think the city does require for sale housing is usually through annexations. And typically, it's, it's in single-family homes or duplexes and those types of smaller units. I don't recall requiring it in like big condo buildings that have for-sale units. One of the complicating factors is, has been for a while, the construction defect lawsuits that condo builders have been facing. And I think it's really disincentivized to that kind of construction. That's at least what we've been hearing. And I know there's been some state legislation to try to take the risks out of that a little bit for the developers. But I don't know to what extent that's been successful. I don't think we've seen a lot of construction of for-sale units in Boulder, for example, since that has passed, maybe, it was maybe two, three years ago. Carl, do you, do you recall seeing? I don't really remember seeing any for-sale.
Yeah, I mean, we've definitely seen a downturn in for-sale because of that, for sure.
Yeah.
But, but don't we have a bunch of for-sales going up along Folsom? Not just, not just the projected for-sale that came to us a few weeks ago, but there's a whole development, I think it's called Walnut Crossing or something. And they're built as townhomes, not as condos, which I believe has a separate financial structure. Is that right, George? The townhomes have, are different from condos in terms of their?
Yeah, I think that in townhomes, usually you have one ownership from the bottom to the top and not the stacked ownership. So the risk is probably less there with the construction defect lawsuits than a condo.
So I can weigh in on that. And planning staff can probably correct me if my, my memory fails me. But, but in a townhouse, you own down into the ground and up into the sky. And there's typically a literal firewall between the different units. So even though they appear attached as a row home, in reality, they're constructed as completely separate units that just have their exterior walls attached on one or more sides, similar to a duplex construction. Whereas in condos, you literally own the airspace between the units. And so it's just a very different construction and also a different legal ownership pattern.
So Lisa, but does that create the opportunity to, potentially create the opportunity to address the issue that George is raising?
Potentially, I think the tricky thing is that because of the way you construct townhomes, I'm just trying, I'm thinking out loud, but because of the way that you construct townhomes, which I would argue is something of a higher-quality construction, the costs are going to be higher as well. So I would anticipate that even though you're getting some, that even though developers getting some benefit in terms of being able to use the land in a way where they can get higher density, provided where their building allows that kind of density, like townhouses or duplexes or fourplexes or triplexes are illegal use, and they can get, you know, run the gamut through us and other entities to get it approved, that they're still probably not going to be terribly affordable yet. You know, so like an apartment-style development or condo-style development is probably going to be a cheaper build and therefore a cheaper for-sale product than a townhouse. So I'm super pro-townhouses, I live in one. I think they do address a wide variety of issues. But I'm just saying, you know, when they're looking at highest and best use, when they're looking at returns, when they're looking at number of units, when they're looking at the cost that they'll eventually assign to it and who it's going to be serving, it's just a different product. So I'd love to see more townhouses. I'd love to see where appropriate more duplexes and triplexes. I don't want to see it across the whole city, but there are certain, I've talked about this before, but there's certain, you know, high-traffic areas where I'd be perfectly happy to see some conversions and I don't, they don't scare me. But yeah, I don't know. I guess that's my answer. You know, I think, I think it depends on what it does to the pro forma and whether it's something developers want to build.
And Jacob, did you want to weigh in on this subject?
I have been, I have been weighing whether to jump in or not. I'll just offer this, this is such a great topic. This is, I think hits at the very core of discussions about housing in cities across the country, and especially in Boulder, where housing challenges are so acute. And what I'd like to do maybe is offer two thoughts for the board in response to this initial question that was brought up. The regulatory system that we have for housing in America, American cities are given zoning constraints, zoning powers when it comes to market rate housing that regulates form, use, and intensity. That system is not empowered to regulate the mechanism of ownership. Right, there is no municipal system, there's no legal framework by which a city can say this system, this, this housing must be conveyed in ownership, in fee simple, in condo, or it must be in rental, assuming that it's market rate. The zoning system doesn't grant those powers to us. And I think it's also worth just focusing on the fact that after 2008, since the collapse of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, the capital markets have gravitated toward the construction purchase and re-trade of assets that provide ongoing revenue streams. Those assets are large-scale rental projects, especially when you get into the 300, 400-unit rental projects. Those are valuable and they are traded on the capital markets and capital flows toward them. There isn't a huge capital market for condo, because those provide one-time financial byproducts, right, to the builders and sellers. And it's a national condition, Boulder's no different from every other city. So our toolkit to produce the kind of housing types that we want to see for Boulder is limited to zoning's ability to mandate form, intensity, and use. So you have to back into it. And if anybody knows of a method to regulate, you know, the conveyance of units or the ownership of units, please let me know. And it's a noble goal, and you can certainly do that when you get into affordable projects, right? That, that is an area where we can in fact do those things, because we have that toolkit. But when it comes to market rate housing, it's just very difficult. And I'm glad that the board has brought it up, because I think it speaks to the condition of housing in cities across the nation and the kind of housing in the kind of cities that we want to build, because we are not granted a regulatory toolkit to control this type of housing outside of what zoning otherwise grants us. So I hope I'm not sounding too professorial. I hope that it's helpful to your dialogue, because to achieve those outcomes, we've got to work with the toolkit that we have. And I think that, that this toolkit that Carl has presented does enable some of that and would welcome more thoughts about how we could use the regulatory toolkit of zoning to back into the housing types that we'd like to see. So I'm going to leave it at that, that was way too much. I'll be quiet, Mr. Chair.
That was, that was, that was helpful. So, so since I brought up the question and Hella was opining a little bit around that, I, I'm curious whether or not through conditional use, through special exception, whether or not through conditional use, through special exceptions, there might be the ability for something like that. Because I would argue, and I think Jacob, you you made the point extremely clear. We're facing unprecedented pressure from the capital markets to come in, build large multifamily, rent everything out and then juice those rents. And uh, because the cap rates that those things are trading at are su- super low. And then over time, what we'll face in ten or fifteen years, what we thought was uh, potentially mo- you know, workforce affordable, you know, market rates, housing that we're building right now turns out to be something that, you know, the people that are 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 looking for that kind of outcome end up not getting ten years from now because those rents have doubled. Um, and and because those have stayed with institutional investors that are national investors, Boulder no longer has a say in their own economic wealth creation. So I I I know that that's a big topic, but to the extent of what um Jacob just mentioned, Hella, are there things that we could look at when it comes to exceptions for these types of things?
And and with the exceptions, do you mean creating maybe a bonus system?
Height modifications, uh, open space modifications. You know, a bunch of the stuff that we're talking about in here and stuff we've talked about in the past.
Well, I I think we can I think we can look at it. I I think it's not impossible to create something. Yeah, we would have to think through it. How does that work? This is that for the initial sale? What would be the limitation that you would want to put on there and then look at it from all angles, I guess, or are we going to get the products? Um, is there an impact from an um from a housing perspective, are we are we negatively impacting protected groups, for example? And I don't know that we would be, but I I wouldn't exclude the possibility to create something like this. Generally, or as as part of a bonus system.
Great. Thank you, Hella. I I'm just going to also jump in um, in my chair role and um and and just um ask the board, um, this is a fascinating topic area, but do we do we think that um, it 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 sounds to me like um, it would require uh, some work to get there so we could make some general comments that we'd like to see this addressed. Uh, I don't know if uh, and and of course, um, you know, I think the question was asked and answered that does this include that? And of course, that it isn't in what we have before us tonight. Uh, but uh, but we could uh and I and we have the opportunity to talk a little bit uh, when we write our end of year letter about some ideas that we can throw over to the council with work plan items. So uh, yeah, I do people feel like it's something we could make more with more discussion tonight, or do we want to highlight this uh, and then uh, and and send that message to council that it's on our minds and it's part of what we've been looking at with uh um, you know, missing middle and affordability, the entire landscape. So I think I saw John Sanderson and Lisa.
Yeah, I I I think it is something that we do want to talk about. Whether it's relevant for tonight and the site review criteria is not obvious to me. It it may be that this is an issue that is better dealt with uh, in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan that gives, for example, the economic question and the associated with it, the social questions that raised that become uh, appropriate for consideration in dealing with these criteria.
Thank you. Lisa?
Um, I agree that it's something that's definitely worth talking about in more depth and making room and space for. Um, and also that I think we've probably talked about it. I hope enough tonight that staff um, has clearly heard what we've said and that we can maybe craft some language, make sure that we, you know, pitch it to council, let them know it's on our minds. But again, I I guess just for tonight, I'm not sure we're going to come up with anything particularly defined. I'd be interested in seeing staff maybe come back at some point as appropriate with some proposed mechanisms or ways we could address it or other communities have tackled it and um, and move from there.
I I I agree with both John and Lisa. I I um, I guess my point as it started out was removing this economic and social language. And I think that that is part of the hook to have this discussion and bring this forward. So I'm a little remiss to try to remove that kind of language from this because I think we can use that language for to further this discussion.
I would I would agree with what George just said. I mean, I think we tend to think about social and economic language pertaining solely to permanently affordable housing. And I think we want to, in the in this discussion, we're having to expand it to include missing middle housing as well.
Um, Lisa?
May I request, um, if it's on a slide or something, what what's the old language and what's the proposed change? Can we look at that?
Yeah, that might make sense.
That might help. That would help me.
Do you have a slide on what we?
Um, because because I um semantics makes it sound negative, and that's not really what I mean. But but in in many ways, I agree with what I just heard from um, Georgie and Sarah. And on the other hand, I'm very um cognizant of what staff was saying is like, how how do you measure this? How do you define this? How do I tell someone, bring a proposal in front of me what it is that I'm looking for? And maybe that fuzziness isn't entirely bad, but it is a little awkward, you know, how do you, how do I know whether to sign off or not? You know, I could probably exercise whatever opinion I wanted if I get to choose what social equity are. Um, you know, so so I understand why staff was trying to remove it. I also can see the argument for finding some way to still address it, even though it's a bit muddy.
While they're looking for the language, maybe maybe it's um, adding in some reference to the racial equity uh, policies that we've that the city council has approved and specifically mentioning low, moderate and middle income housing, which by definition references our ever changing um, meet um, average median income, et cetera.
So were you talking about the the housing diversity criterion or or were you focused on the economic feasibility criteria?
Either or, perhaps both. I was just trying to figure out, you know, what what language is currently extant and what we're talking about either striking or modifying.
Yeah, what I heard Georgie uh, asking was that um, there was language that referred to the economics uh, and that was being removed in the new.
Can you all see the screen now?
There it is.
Yes.
So this is the criterion we're talking about.
Mm hmm. So I I have a lot of empathy, actually, and and I don't have a problem with striking economic feasibility language. I think what what, I don't want to put words in in John's mouth or Sarah's mouth. I'm sure you'll correct me if I do, but um I think what you're talking about is more like economic impact or like equity impact or something like that. This is just is it economically feasible? And I I agree with staff that it's kind of silly to have that as a criteria because the market's going to decide that, the developer's going to decide that. If it's not feasible, they're going to be like, well, we're not building it. Yeah.
Well, what I was I mean, you're making the the point that I wanted to make too. I'm thinking of the impact and whether Boulder is achieving what it wants with this whatever project it's considering. And so that includes social and economic and uh, and the ownership type questions.
Which I think is fair, but I'm just not sure it's the question that's before us because C and I and I know you were you were arguing that that you see something different here, John, but C to me really does explicitly caught an economic feasibility um, versus economic impact or or equity or or anything else. Or maybe you're looking at the first phrase, the proposed development success, I mean, the broad range of BBC policies. I mean, that's overall within the total Multivalley Comprehensive Plan, so we consider that elsewhere, I think.
Carl, doesn't your, doesn't yours, it's like the first or second slide of your your PowerPoint frame this in term, not solely in terms of, but in partially in terms of social, economic and s- some other, I can't remember what the third.
The goals and objectives.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, so is there any chance you could pull that up? Because I my sense is that I I and again, I don't like Lisa, I don't want to put words in George's mouth, but I think that's
No, that's that's what I'm referencing. I'm referencing that in the PowerPoint.
Yeah, let's look at that. I I think that um, maybe the what the criteria or that uh, site review criteria as it exists today doesn't really get it what we're wanting here, but maybe there's uh, a good recommendation coming out of this that would be something a little bit different.
Sorry, I'm trying to share here, but my Zoom isn't really cooperating.
I gotta go turn the heat on in my house. Hold on one second.
How would you, um, we're actually um, over ninety minutes in. Should we take a a five minutes uh, break and then you can put that up and then we'll reconvene? Why don't why don't we take five minutes and be back at uh, seven forty eight?
We're taking five, Sarah.
Oh, great. Thank you.
All right, it looks like we're gathering back together. Okay, so um, Carl, I guess this is the slide that um, talks about the first bullet there talks about the addressing the community economic, social, environmental objectives in the comp plan. Is that what we were looking at? So um is there, do we have any like, um, do we have more questions about this? Do we want to um, try to when we get to the third question, kind of come up with uh, some recommendations on what we think might address uh, the concerns about um, the economic aspect? Just not not exactly sure where we're going with the question at this point.
I I'd like to. I mean, I like to propose something when we when we get there or not necessarily me, but but have a quick discussion about what we should propose as a board if we think it's important. Because I you know, I I look at sort of the task of planning and thinking about what that's all about. And and I think that this is an aspect that maybe may have accelerated faster than when a lot of people were thinking about this stuff and we're in a different situation as an economy, you know, five, ten years uh, than ago than we were. So I I think it's worth the discussion as it relates to this type of stuff.
Sounds good. All right, um, so with that, um, shall we um move forward with uh, any more questions and then we'll we'll revisit this when we come up with our recommendations. Sarah?
Uh, thanks. So I want to uh, bring up the appendix J exclusions. Um, uh, I understand that there are a couple of people on on city council who wanted to exclude RMX and the rationale was what RMX two looks like up in uh, North Boulder. It's not what RMX looks like where I live. And um, and I feel like it's a um, it's sort of a hammer um, to suggest um, putting art to to not excluding RMX. Uh, and and I would like, I'd like to, it is my sense and belief that RMX should be included in the exclusion. There's no super simple way to say that. Um, because th- that's Gos Grove and um, Whittier, much of Whittier. And those are uh, already, uh, we have a a real mix of of um, multiplexes and um, single family homes, and it would be unfortunate to have that be um in have that, these two areas um, essentially incentivized, which is a word I hate, but incentivized to transform into um, four and five story buildings over time. It would, we we would really lose some important neighborhoods in in my opinion.
So is that a question?
No, it's a comment. I mean, we're commenting, we're commenting on what's been presented and my comment is RMX in the ex- in the exclusion zone.
Okay, yeah. All right. So um, and well, um, I I mean, if we were a number three, I would, um, maybe we'd go around and see what how other people felt. Um and we can, we can kind of jump around, but um, I just thought maybe we could And we can, we can kind of jump around, but I just thought maybe we could complete the Q and A portion, if that makes sense. And we can, again, when we start to summarize what our recommendations might be, we can see how people feel about that.
I do have one more question. Is, is this going through design advisory board as well?
Uh, it is not. Uh, the design advisory board, you know, makes comments on projects that typically are subject to design guideline. They don't evaluate projects based on whether they're consistent with their criteria or not. So we have not presented this to them.
Okay.
John, did you have a question?
Yeah, just to, I'm, I'm glad we're talking about these issues that Sarah and, and George have brought up. In addition, there was one proposal by staff to regarding the transparency of on the ground floor. And I, I find, I think it's excellent that we're talking about this. And I have no qualms with the transparency on ground floor for commercial space. What I'm worried about is when there's, uh, when there's residential units on the ground floor and how, how that will be dealt with in this transparency requirement because often you see curtains drawn in front of windows on ground floors when people, you know, justifiably just want some privacy. So I'd like to make sure that we distinguish between residential and commercial uses in this matter.
Yeah, we can go back to the language in the form-based code. I, I think it does say that the transparency requirement would not apply for residential use, just because of the nature of, you know, the privacy issues and everything. So I will take another look at that and see how that would work in the criteria.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just follow up on that question? Am I correct in remembering that we ended up with this criteria? Because of concerns about what was happening on East Pearl and the loss of retail space on the ground floor and then we sort of applied it in major development areas across the cities. Am I remembering that correctly?
I mean, we did do that. That's not really necessarily the same issue. This is more about just the general design of the building. We did address that through the use standards about, you know, that residential uses should be located above the ground floor so that that space is reserved. So we did that in the MU three zone and as well as the BR one zone.
Are we, are we creating a, a snowball effect of retail and commercial space that might never be fully used? I'm just that, that, does this requirement potentially do that? Like I, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we are creating an unintended consequence of we always need more retail space, but it doesn't mean it's always affordable, which is a challenge. But are we creating an, an incentive to, or requirement to build retail space that might never actually be utilized efficiently or, or create a glut of retail space?
Yeah, I think the requirement that we're proposing is really just applied to areas that already have that typology. So kind of maintaining that, I don't know that we would necessarily be creating more. Um, I think the point about, you know, if there is ground for floor residential that we might approach it differently, but I don't think that we're perpetuating something that's going to have a bunch of empty retail spaces.
And I think that, I'll just comment that I think that when this question was raised by council, it was triggered a lot by the base mar situation with the Whole Foods and concern that there might be ground floor residential in those BC one areas as well. So it was kind of like going in that direction. But yeah, like Carl said, I don't think this really changes much. And I think that we've actually seen a lot of proposals come before us that actually say in reality we're not, we shouldn't have retail spaces on every ground floor, you know, street facing place. And oftentimes we see that it does make sense not to do that, right? So I, I think you're on, I think you're right, Sarah, that we're kind of, we may have gotten, gotten a little overboard on that, but we're seeing that there is flexibility in the use review process to treat special cases when, when we don't want that.
So page fifty four of the pack, it actually has the proposed criteria. So it already says that it accepts ground floor residential for that seventy five percent requirement. It would just require the standard twenty percent for residential uses, just to answer board member Gerstle's question.
Thank you.
And then I had a very specific question. The table two dash three maximum CO2 content standards for compressive strength and all, all that stuff. Is, is this, um, is this something new or was that actually in there and just moved from somewhere else? Cause that was kind of interesting to me.
This is new. This is the, the carbon embodied energy requirement. We, we are joined by Kristen Woodco tonight. If you have questions about the criteria, or I don't know, Kristen, if you want to jump on real quick and, and talk about that.
Thank you for joining us, Kristen. Yes.
Hi. So yeah, that table is added into the building lifecycle impact carbon section and we have worked with other jurisdictions locally to develop that table and to work on those numbers to come up with criteria for low, low carbon concrete.
Well, I think that's great to see you step forward. There, thank you. All right. Any other questions before we have some general reactions and all right, well, I guess, um, so thanks for answering all those questions. I, I think that maybe for then number two, our reactions to does planning board agree that the updated criteria meet the goals and objectives outlined for the project? Maybe just go around, around the horn and everybody can just weigh in on how they feel. And then in number three, we can talk about some things that we would like to maybe change, suggest changes or additions. So does anyone want to start on reactions?
Yeah, I think these are overall very positive changes. Um, I'm sure a lot of various things under section three, but overall I'm, I'm comfortable with the changes staff has made and I hope that they make our jobs easier. I think one of the things I remember from planning school is the admonition, admonition that you can't legislate taste. Which is true, but, but, but I think you've made a valiant effort at it and, and provided kind of some very specific guidance. And I'm a huge fan of form-based code. So you know, overall, I think these are all big improvements and, and address some of the things that we frequently worry over and kind of get stressed out by on planning board. And so I hope that it means we'll see better things coming forward in time.
Great. Well, um, I, I can certainly, I think some of my comments are very similar. I agree with everything you said, Lisa. It's a, a lot of these changes are things that I think that they resonate because they are the kinds of things that, you know, kind of detailed things that we wanted to see changed. And a lot of them ring, ring true as to ones that we've been kind of waiting for. So, um, so I was glad to see that this section is going to read a lot more clear, clearly. And we'll have kind of a top down approach. Um, I think the reorganization makes a lot of sense. It was also good to see us quickly address concerns with the expiration of appendix J that the residential zones would not be eligible for high modifications. So that was something that I think was a loose end with the August expiration. So it should help folks realize that, that, that was done. And I think that was something that we saw in June that we would have would have definitely wanted to, to make sure happened this year. So that's great. I agree completely with, with form-based code. I think that I like, I like to think that we're moving towards a bolder looking feel. And I think that some of those design guidelines are really useful to do that. And I, I kind of compare with some of the disasters. I, I'll call them disasters that happen in some neighborhoods in Denver without that kind of attention. If you live, if you walk down Tennyson, beautiful, beautiful street and many things that are going in are nice, but some of them are just awful. And it's because there, there wasn't this kind of, of aesthetic attention in the code that, that can cause outcomes to be more compatible with what's going on, on this, on the street front. So, so I think it, it'll really help Boulder avoid oh, continue to avoid those kinds of problems. So that, that's great. And I'll just say that again, I think that this is not the there, I, I think that we will probably, as we talk about suggestions, there, there are area, this doesn't solve everything, right? So BC, the BCs are something that I think really require more of a work plan item for the future to make the string of pearls work right. I don't even think the use table stuff is enough. I think there's both use table and intensity standards that need to be addressed to make it work right. Uh, and I think it means, means envisioning what we expect those neighborhood centers to be. And I, and I, and, and so what happens is when we can't do it, and it's almost like a, a it's almost like an area plan for those zones, right? So I, I think that it's something that we should really think about in conjunction with all of these great ideas around housing types, owner, ownership versus rental and economic pressures that we're, that are starting to worry us. So, so I totally agree with all, all of that, but I don't think that I see anything in here that's moving us in the wrong direction. Uh, so it may be that we, we, that this is the scope of these changes and then we continue to build. So. Georgie?
I think I'd, yeah, I, I am general consensus with, with Lisa and David. I, I thought I appreciate Carl, you're walking us through this and really explaining it in a, in a very clear manner. I agree completely with the form-based code. I won't be redundant with, with what others have said. I thought Sarah brought up an interesting point and it sounds like Carl, you're coming back with that anyways around a little bit more prescription around diversity of housing and what that could mean. So I, I think that that would be a welcome improvement or discussion next time we see this. And then the one thing I would argue is sort of back to where the, the comments that I made during this, which is when you look at the first goal in this slide, uh, in this deck. I think that we as a community are facing unprecedented pressure on a national level related to development of rental housing only. And I think Jacob crystallized that very clearly on, on, on what he's seeing as well. And so to the extent, whether it's here or whether it's something in the near future, I, I do believe there is urgency around this because every part to, to what Sarah had mentioned, which was developers will build what we, what they're allowed to build. And when you look at things like Diagonal and Spruce Street, which are great projects, both, both those developers are saying that rental housing is the way for them to go. Uh, and we have no tools as a, as a community right now to to bring to the table to say, wait, we don't know if that meets the social and economic goals of our community. And to the extent that there are tools that could be designed for our disposal, our, our, our ability either through council or through planning or both. I, I think it's incumbent upon us to bring that up as a critical issue as a follow-on to this. Thank you.
Great. Um, Sarah, before we go to you, Lori, did you have anything you were going to add? I saw your video going and maybe you were just. Okay, Sarah, go ahead.
I'm here, here to everything George just said. Um, and I would just like to add, and this is sort of a question slash comment. It's not clear to me that the, the, what's in front of us makes it easy for smaller developments and small, smaller sized developers to flourish. Um, and I think that that is unfortunate. And I, I'm just thinking about something that Paul Sapparito said during the discussion on form-based code for Alpine Balsam, which was to think about ways to make those parcels a little bit smaller or quite a bit smaller so that you could have more developers working, more applicants applying for, with projects. And it's, it strikes me that a lot of what was in this material tonight is really oriented towards those large scale projects and large scale developers. So I think I'm not sure where, how we raise that. But I'm putting it on the table as a, as something I'd love for staff to think about as they move forward with this.
John?
Yeah, thanks. I amazingly enough, I don't think I've heard anything I disagree with from my fellow board members. And that's a, a first for me, but I would like to say that I, I think George and Sarah's comments are, are right on and I won't repeat them, but I would like to underline and emphasize them. There's one additional comment that I have that I raised at the beginning. And I, I don't think it has been suitably addressed. And that is the question of whether we are discriminating against our, you know, affordable, permanently affordable housing by not requiring it, the same open space. And not giving them the same open space benefits that we are giving the rest of the city. And I'm aware of the economic concerns and the financial concerns of that. But by giving exceptions, we are in danger of creating areas of town that will be permanently less desirable because of the lack of open space and parks. And I think that's a trade-off that we need to consider explicitly because I think the long-term consequences could be very severe, very undesirable. And beyond that, I think distinguishing between the, the developers finances and the city's economic concerns are, are, continue to be an important issue that I, I would not be in favor of eliminating.
Okay. Well, I think everybody's had a round on reaction. So it sounds like we're kind of transitioning into into comments and recommendations, which would be number three. Recommend any modifications to the criteria in the draft. People want to build on that then and continue to throw out comments. We can also get reactions on how other board members feel if they agree. Um, I, and with, with things that are being proposed. So I know that those will get summarized for council. So and the ones that have a lot of broad consensus, we definitely want to make sure council hears.
Sorry, David, my, my computer, my internet was a little unstable, so I missed what you said after John stopped talking.
Oh, okay. I was just saying, let's go ahead and, uh, because we've started to kind of transition into our recommendation, recommending any modifications to the criteria in the draft, which is the third question. Uh, so I was going to propose that people throw them out there. We, and they can get passed on to council. Actually, the council's not looking at this before we look at it again, is it? Are they? So this is more just kind of recommendations on what we think will make it better for when we look at it in four weeks.
Correct.
So I know John started us down that path with asking for, I, I do think that, um, the, the one thing that I would, I think is just a question is that I wonder if the BC one open space requirements match our vision for what kind of, of residential we want in those zones in general. And I, I think that that makes it kind of hard to know. I don't know, you know, right now, we're just looking at at community benefits. So we're looking at levers to encourage affordable housing. And this is just one of those levers. And it could be interpreted as that, but I think that perhaps the, the open space, we've kind of hit on the fact that those open space requirements are maybe something that should be looked at when we do a more a, a more general look at PC one. So I, I don't know that I have the same level of concern about that, but I'd love to hear what other board members think about that.
Well, I think it's important. I wish Lupita was here to put in her two cents on this. Uh, and I, I actually, when I was reading the notes from the last meeting, she did actually talk about this as a concern when it was brought up with diagonal plaza. when it was brought up with diagonal plaza. And I I do think it is. I don't have and I don't have an answer, but I think it is a a concern that should be part of the and I'm sure will be part of the ongoing discussion that staff has. And I would encourage them to wrestle with that.
I I would agree with that. You know, without looking at specific case examples or even specific sites, I I don't know exactly how concerned I am about it for any given project. But I think it's certainly something worth having in there. And if we are going to make that change, I think adding some language around equity and race and, you know, if we are whenever we consider reducing open space, if we were to introduce that language, that that should be a specific criterion, something that planning board is charged with is is trying to think about what what that's doing and if it's creating haves and have nots. And I know no one is proposing this, nor do we have the density for it, but a very extreme example that comes to mind is like locked parks in New York City. You know, which I understand why they're locked, I get it, and it bums me out like it just is painful. And and I don't think that's necessarily what we're saying here. I won't talk about pools in North Boulder, but I I I think we should have some kind of consideration i- if we are going to be reducing open space, what access does the site have to nearby open space? How is it the same or different from regular market rate housing around there and so on, so that we don't kind of create this two tiered housing?
Can I can I just follow up with something Lisa just said? Which now has gone right out of my head, and I apologize, it'll come back in in a bit. Oh, here, this is it. I knew it would come back. So there is some mention of area planning in this in the, at least in the narrative. And I think one of the one of the challenges here is that much of what comes to planning board are projects. And we respond to those projects. And so each project will deal with its own reduction of a potential reduction of open space in its own way. And then you end up with a not necessarily particularly coherent or cohesive area. And I think maybe this is an the the this this site review criteria update might create or incentivize more area planning as a precursor to everything else. And again, not trying to slow things down, just trying to recognize that planning is planning, it's not to quote Lupita, we're not the welcoming committee, we're the planning committee. And and is this a tool? And I'm not saying it is, but could this be a tool for prioritizing some area planning, which then leads to the outcomes, the kind of outcomes that we're looking for?
Okay. Lisa.
I'll just be brief. And and what I would say around that is even if it doesn't quite rise to the level of like a formal area plan, I always really appreciate when we see products come forward, the overall context of that site and what's around it, and you know, what's happening with transportation and what perks are available and what major employers are nearby and what what are the use forms that are, you know, visible from the site near the site? And that that might be kind of where we bring some of this in. I I also am a huge fan of area plans, but even if we're not able to resource that or do that to the intensity that we want, you know, to say like, hey, if you were to reduce open space, here are all of the amenities that are open to these people around here, you know, and to have that be part of what's brought before planning board, so we can make an assessment at a broader scope than just the the site that's there.
Great. And I'll also, I I think that I I hear general discomfort with that, this the this and I I agree. It doesn't, it it does have kind of a odd feel to to reduce the open space. But but I also, I think we also should remind ourselves, the the a project that is doing this won't be 100% affordable. So it will have both market rate and affordable. So it isn't like you're specifically targeting the affordable units. You are making a denser community that includes affordable. But I I do, I think that it's still I it doesn't feel perfect to to tie it tie it in in that way. And I I think that I'm hearing that from most board members. All right. So and let's see, another another one. Oh, John.
Well, I I I'm very happy with what Lisa and Sarah and you, David, have have said, and those are exactly the issues I was hoping to raise and provoke discussion and consideration on. So I I I think we all agree on that. The other point I'd like to make is to emphasize what George mentioned. That is the the question of how how these units are owned and and that those sorts of issues, which I I recognize is not traditionally within the realm of tools and issues that we deal with, but I certainly believe that it's very important in many aspects over the long term for the city. And so I would encourage us to move ahead on consideration of how we can address those issues.
So I we could, we talked through that pretty heavily when we were asking questions. I one thing that we could encourage is to, you know, when we come back in four weeks, if staff has some time to kind of you know, maybe have some reactions to that, the the ownership issue and whether we might have some levers. If not in this particular iteration of code changes, how that might look in future work plan items, if it is big. But I I think it would warrant, you know, if 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 you want to take the the next four weeks and just give us some additional reactions to that, that would be really useful. And if, of course, if it can be done in this, I'm hearing a lot of interest in making progress on that. And I think it's pretty pretty much consensus across the board.
Yeah, we can, we can look into that further, and we also welcome any comments that the board has about what the expectation might be for a criterion on housing diversity, because we have been kind of going back and forth on that. So any ideas would certainly help us. Thanks.
Hey, Carl, could you tell us a little bit about the conversation that you all have been having about criteria on housing diversity? That might be really helpful for us.
Well, we have a, we have proposed language that's in the packet. Again, it kind of derives from the the requirements that are up in the R M X two zone. Obviously, that's a a zone that's meant for mixed density. So we'd probably be looking at something not quite as strict. But we've been kind of looking at a more simple kind of baseline, you know, if a certain project is over either a certain acreage or a certain number of units that it would trip a requirement that there be at least, you know, two housing types or if larger, potentially three. So that's, we're trying to finesse like what that language looks like. But also looking at maybe for smaller projects, maybe under a certain acreage, maybe it's then the unit mix. So if it's like, for instance, less than five acres, it might be that the project has to have two different types of unit mixes, three bedrooms and two bedrooms, something like that. And then over five acres, it might be two housing types and then specifying what the housing types would have to be. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at, but we certainly are open to any feedback.
Can what five a five acres, can you tell us what, give us a development intent that's five acres?
That went on the
I'm not entirely sure, but maybe the Liquor Mart site. Obviously, there's much larger projects that we're looking at, like water view and diagonal crossing or upwards of like 20 acres. We're going to look at some of those projects and see how many different housing types we got in them and see what the, you know, what the right baseline would be.
The Hoshi Motor Site must be pretty close to five acres, right? The one we looked at just a couple of weeks ago. I don't know. It probably says right at the top of the packet of the agenda item, how many acres it is.
Can I just follow up the one more, just one more question to Carl? The when you you use the term housing types, but it sounds like you, it might mean two bedrooms or three bedrooms versus apartment and condo or apartment and town home or town home and single family home is can you just define your terms for us?
No, again, I I think what we were looking at was, you know, obviously, housing type would be like stacked flats versus townhouse.
Okay.
Whereas unit types would be like a three, a collection of three bedroom units and a collection of two bedroom units. And in there is in talking to our, you know, folks who have been reviewing these, you know, obviously, there's a need to get a a right unit mix too in projects. So it may not make sense to say for smaller projects, you have to have two different housing types, you know, based on their size. So it might make more sense to just focus on unit size for unit types for those types of projects. And then the larger projects have that baseline for housing types.
Okay.
So on on page on page fifty of the fifty of fifty eight of the packet, it does have the section F, housing diversity, proposed language. And do we have housing type defined in the in the code then? Because it does use the term
We do have it defined in in our definitions already in the language. I think we probably need to finesse this a little bit more to be more clear.
You say fifty eight, David?
Uh, yeah, page, I'm sorry, fifty of fifty eight. I it it in the ordinance, it's fifty or fifty eight in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah, and that language is very similar to what's in the R M X two zone, but with some different acreages in there. But again, we're working on trying to simplify that.
You can, you know, in some ways, it almost seems like the smaller developments, and this may economically not make sense, but it almost seems like the smaller acreage might be more conducive to a diversity of of housing types. Because, I mean, it it certainly certainly in terms of sort of human scale, which I know is a term we're trying to move away from, but because you can make a relatively dense development, I'm just again thinking of of a holiday, but a relatively dense development that has multiple types of housing that still feels very much like a community and is not necessarily a large scale apartment building, which you kind of can't shoehorn into a smaller space, but just a thought.
So on that topic, I I want to loop back to the what you were mentioning on the R M X zones. Sarah, so I first of all, I was really, I'm glad that I haven't heard anyone worried about worried about excluding the B T. Because I think B T is a good zone for being, you know, having the opportunity to do height exemptions for affordable housing and things like that. I think those, and so I was, I think it was kind of an omission that was originally not in there. With R M X, it seems like R M X one, the the development potential in most of the lots in R X M R M X one isn't going to actually allow many of these proposals for height exemptions to actually happen, especially since it's like 6,000 square foot per dwelling unit requirement. So and I don't see that many big lots. So most of the big, the most of the multi unit things in our R M X one right now are nonconforming things from years past before the zoning changed in the nineties. So I just, I wonder, Carl, if, you know, would it be possible? I I don't, I don't feel that strongly about R M X one, just because I don't think there's going to be that many potentials, although it kind of I think it's an ongoing problem that we have so much nonconformity in that that zone. That's a bigger discussion. But I but I don't know if maybe if, you know, R M X two would be more appropriate, but maybe R M X one not, and if that that could be considered.
I I think that certainly could be a consideration if the board wanted to make that recommendation.
Because I, yeah, so because I I know that I know those concerns for R M X two, but all right, you want to say anything else on that, Sarah?
I if I'm understanding you, you're you're you and I are in agreement that R M X one should remain, should be excluded from being included.
I just think there's a lot of other things that could that need to be looked at there. Yeah, so I I wouldn't be concerned if it were.
Well, right, but there are many other considerations, but that won't doesn't necessarily stop an applicant from trying to 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 you to take advantage of an opportunity, not to to I'm trying not to use a loaded word to try to explore an opportunity. So in in I I really think it should be excluded. But
Okay. Any other thoughts on that? I just don't want to get to four weeks from now and have that be a sticky point. So if that can be something that Carl, Carl, you hear there's concern. All right, have we missed any other items that the that the board would like to potentially see addressed for next time? All right, wow. Well, thanks so much, Carl. I think that I think that hopefully that feedback is useful and we'll be looking forward to seeing it again in four weeks. Any reactions from your side before we move?
Oh, I think this is really good feedback, and I we knew diversity was going to be an important point to talk about, so we appreciate that.
Great. All right. Well, with that, let's go ahead then and just move on, move into the the remainder of matters, which is, first of all, any well, I'll from the board, I have one matter. And then I'll see if anybody else has, or John.
Yeah, I I just have a question to to Jacob, and that is or to staff, I should say. And that is to learn how city council dealt with our recommendation on the diagonal plaza development about combining that with an area, an area plan that would move ahead at the same time.
Well, it's a great question. Thank you for asking. And and council did voice that, I think it was Mary Young, actually, who asked that specific question, and I responded to it. And it's the same response I'll give to you guys, which is that, first of all, I personally am thankful for every request that we have for an area plan, because frankly, it needs job security for the entire planning department. And I think it's a good thing to do. It also helps to set community expectations about what should happen in specific, specific areas of the city. So the request for area plans is is one that I think comes from the right place, and I also welcome that. So I I want to be clear about that, that the request for area planning generally is a positive thing, because it helps us as a community to achieve the goals that we want to see collectively. The second thing in in regard specifically to diagonal plaza, and this is what I responded to Mary Young, is that the applicant in this case is wanting, seeks to proceed along a certain timeframe, right? They have a, they want to move from concept plan to site review. That's that's where they are, and they need to move forward. Our ability to conduct an area plan is entirely contingent on next year's work plan from council. Presently, we do not have the staff capacity to conduct an additional area plan. We just don't have it. We are requesting thirteen additional positions, which have been granted to us, by the way, and and thank you to our city council, if anyone's listening. And we will hire those people and we will onboard them. Our ability to produce the area plan would not sync up with the site reviewed process for the diagonal plaza proposal that's currently on the plate. So we could do the area plan, and if council seeks to to prioritize that, we will do it. But it will happen over the course of the next year. It will not happen in synchronization with the site plan process for the diagonal plaza project. So it's a welcome request. The timing of it, the timing of our ability to deliver that as a government is not going to match with what the applicant wants to do in terms of their site review. So I don't know if that answers your question, John, but that that's the that's the long winded version of what I said to Mary.
Yeah, I I just wanted to know what council did. It sounded like one member of council was concerned and the rest didn't dwell so much on it.
I I think that's exactly correct, that one member of council brought it up, and then we responded a a shorter version of what I just told you. And then council did not take up that that measure. Now, with that said, I will also offer my personal observations. These are just Jacob's observations, which is that we have a council right now who knows that this council's days are limited, an election is coming right around the corner. And they are largely deferring work plan items to the next council as they should. And as a department, we are committed to bringing to the new council a slate of work plan items that honor the collective requests of the planning board of this council and generally responsive to the needs of the community. So the next council will and should decide on the work plan of our department when they holistically consider all of the issues that that need to be addressed by the community.
Thank you.
Right. All right. Well, that actually leads in very nicely to the board matter that I wanted to discuss. So Cindy forwarded a Alright, well, that, um, actually leads in very nicely to the board matter that I wanted to discuss, um, so, um, Cindy forwarded a, um, uh, email, uh, from, gosh. Well, do you remember who sent out the email on the end of your letters, uh, Cindy?
Uh, Rihanna Taylor.
Or Taylor Reiman, yeah, sorry.
I read it backwards.
There we go, Taylor Reiman, I see the name here, so yeah, Taylor Reiman has sent out a letter to all of the boards, uh, and Cindy forwarded on, um, talking about the end of your letter, so it's kind of that time of the year that we need to start thinking about that. Um, it's an interesting format they're asking for, um, they, uh, I don't know if you read the email, but they're kind of asking us to really just send them one proposed new work plan item that we as a board would like to see. Uh, that's going to be hard, because last year we sent about five or six or seven. So, uh, uh, so I think, um, you know, the way, the way we do tend to misbehave, we may put some pros, some pros in front of our, uh, one recommendation, so we may have a one-page letter with some, some of our priorities like we've done before, and then, I don't know, that would be my idea for what this board might actually really want to do, because I think there's probably some ideas the board would like to get across, as well as the one recommendation, um, so, um, so we probably need to start thinking about how we want to do it, do we, uh, want to do a subcommittee in, like a working session like we did last year? Um, let's see, um, one question I had for staff is, do we have access to the existing items that would be considered on the work plan, for example, you stable subcommittee is still on the work plan, it just may not be scheduled for completion, right, so, uh, so we probably wouldn't want to put that one on, since I assume that it's probably on, in scope, so.
Yeah, Dave, we can provide a list of everything that's currently in flight, um, you know, right now that we're going to bring in for a landing, um, early next year.
Perfect. So yeah, if we could get that, um, and then I'll just open it up, anybody want to make comments about how we might want to address this and?
I think that we did it last year, worked really pretty well. Um, but we had a session, um, which we did online, uh, uh, which was a little, it's so much easier to be in person, but this is what we're, what we're stuck with, um, where we, um, just sort of threw some ideas up on the proverbial whiteboard and, and looked to see where there was um, plurality or majority agreement, and then I think you and I actually did a first draft, and then Lisa and Lupita did a second draft.
Yeah, that worked pretty well, didn't it?
I just want to add that this is due December fifteenth, so we only have three meetings in which to put this together.
Did we do a, oh, go ahead, Lisa.
Oh, I was just gonna say that, um, without, I, I, I'd be curious to see, I, I think we might be able to kind of look back at some of that whiteboarding that we did last time, and even I, I really liked the letter we did last year, um, and I would almost like to use that as a bit of a jumping off point, um, where people can certainly add things or strike things or say that they hate the whole thing, which I don't think anyone will, but, um, that might save us some time, um, and then, and then maybe we can look at it and see if there's certain things that sort of live under, I don't know, if there's certain things that we want to put on the work plan that we feel like actually address a lot of it, because like, one thing that arises for me that I know is a major focus on there is kind of missing middle, and I know that that's also something we've been talking about right now, so it's very top of mind, but I think it actually addresses a lot of our issues, um, although I'm also totally open to breaking the rule about only doing one thing. I mean, they can't actually make us, right? Um, but if I had to pick one thing, that's probably one of the ones I would do, because I think it, it gets to the issues of diversity, it gets to issues of equity, it gets to built form, it gets to, you know, who lives in Boulder and who doesn't, and issues of capital investment, I don't know, I, I just, I think it addresses a lot of stuff all at once.
So yeah, and I, um, I think that I, I, you kind of hit, hit that right on the head, that, that, uh, if, I think it's important that if we can come up with our highest priority one, that is our number one, that we can still list some other ones that we still think that should be looked at, absolutely, breaking rules. Uh, any other observations?
Can I just follow up with a question, do we, are we required, are we limited to having our brainstorming session during a planning board meeting?
So last time we, um, I can't remember if we had a special meeting, two years ago, we actually had a special drafting outside of our regular planning board meeting. I can't remember if that's what we did last year, does anyone remember? I think we might have scheduled a special meeting, but it has to be an open meeting, and it has to be announced, because we have more than two people in the room, so, uh, but, but that does, that means I don't think we have to do open comment, right, or do we? No, so we could have, we could have a special meeting without open comment publicly announced, and people could watch us like they did last year.
So I'll just respond, I, I'm remembering the in-person meeting we had down in the conference room, and it was incredibly helpful, because we, you know, we, it wasn't eleven o'clock at night, we weren't, you know, exhausted from having done all these other things. In fact, it was the middle of the day, it was like, uh, early afternoon, if I remember correctly, and we were all fresh and really able to kick some ideas around, and I thought it was really great, and I'm, maybe we could try to do something similar.
That sounds great, and, um, I was gonna maybe see if we could get a, get, like, I think last year, like, you and I kind of took that first pass, if we could get volunteers to maybe pair up and, uh, do that first pass again and bring ideas, and then the board, we could all maybe meet and throw out ideas and then schedule a drafting session, so like, in, in the next matters, maybe maybe we could, uh, just see where we're at, and then, um, do a calendar check and pick a day for drafting session. Does that make sense? Is it now?
Are you talking about a virtual meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we would probably, we could use Mural again, if people like using that with the, with the things, I was actually wondering, um, since Lupita isn't here, um, I, I was wondering if she might be interested in being one of the first past people, since she, she's a incredible wordsmith there, and, uh, uh, oftentimes has great insights into how to, you know, put these things together, so was gonna maybe see if she might be one of the ones that might want to volunteer. Um, I don't know if anyone else wants to be in the first draft group.
I'll help.
So, great.
As long as it follows the kicking around ideas session. Because I think that's really, I think that is that's where our, that, you know, you and I didn't come up with these ideas ourselves, we took the stuff that came out of the kicking around session, and then
So maybe the first step is the kicking around, um, which would mean maybe we should do during calendar check, try to pick a time for this meeting, and then, um, the first thing we would do is come with our, um, you know, with having read last year, I always read the last two or three years of letters actually before, and, uh, then, then come in with our, what we think we want, might want to re-say, and some of the thoughts about work plan items and things like that. But I, I would, um, would, uh, would you uh, as the, uh, I mean, last year, I kind of ran the drafting session, I'd love it if somebody else would would do that, but I don't know if you're comfortable with mural, Sarah, or?
Oh, you do, you don't want me touching, touching technology. I'll blow something up by mistake. I am not the person to do that.
Let's think on that, I, maybe we can have someone besides, I, I just feel like it would be a little bit much for the same person to do it, because as the mural runner last year, I felt like maybe I was too, you know, it put me in a position to be doing a lot, and I just don't want to do it twice in a row, I want to give somebody else the opportunity, so, um, if anyone thinks they would be comfortable with mural, let me know. And maybe I'll, I'll have a conversation with Lupita and see if she was willing to pair up with you, Sarah, maybe she, maybe she knows how to do that. Otherwise, we might even have a staff person.
Yeah, I just, you don't, you don't, really don't want me touching that stuff.
Good, okay, would we want to, um, look at, uh, calendar times for a special meeting? Let's see. So we're we have a planning board meeting on the fourth of November. So, um, do we want to do it maybe like the well, let's do the fifth, you said the fifteenth of December, so we've got some time, maybe, so maybe we do it like the week after the next, uh, planning board meeting, so that we have, we can check in and see how it's going, so somewhere around Thursday, the eleventh?
Sure.
It's Veterans Day, I don't know if that plays into any of this.
That is a city holiday.
So we could do it like on the twelfth, the Friday? Or Friday?
Staff still working? Uh, staff till, still, um, furloughed on Friday, or not, I don't know if furlough is the right word. No.
The twelfth is a workday.
It is.
Is everybody, um, on this call okay with the twelfth of November?
I may or may not be able to make it, but I'll work to be there.
So are you suggesting we have a meeting, a full board meeting on the twelfth, is that what you're?
This would be, um, like a drafting session, so it would be a public meeting, but, um, it would not be a, a board, well, it wouldn't be a, a business meeting, it would be just a drafting session to work on the letter. So it's kind of like what we did when we met in the conference room two years ago, so we publican, publicly announce it, but people can come watch us work. Is that, is that doable?
But no public comment or anything, they, they could just observe.
Kind of like a retreat.
And are you thinking six o'clock on a Friday?
Well, I was thinking maybe we try to do it during the day.
Okay.
What do you think?
If we do it during the day, I definitely am not available Friday the twelfth from one thirty to three thirty. Um, but I might be able to be available before one thirty.
How about, um, a morning meeting? What, nine to, nine to eleven?
With me.
Works for me.
Shall we, uh, try for that, with, how does that work for you, Lisa, is, is this a good, not a good day in general?
I just don't have coverage, but I can work to get it. So I just can't commit right now, but nine to eleven potentially works.
Alright. So why don't we see if that, that holds, is that okay, Cindy, can we notice a meeting like that? Great. Alright, any other matters from board? Okay, matters from staff? Alright, well, Cindy, uh, um, nothing from you, calendar check?
Nope, we're on a somewhat semi-regular schedule till the end of the year.
Do we have any, any sense of when we will start meeting in person again?
No.
I was just thinking, I'm giving up on the hope that I'll be able to turn this meeting like, have to let go once again because of COVID. Alright, thanks, everybody, we're out of here before nine o'clock.
Thanks so much, everyone, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, have a good evening.
In a couple of weeks.
Good night.